Good evening. If I could ask that you all join me in standing for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to call Reverend Harris from St. Paul AME in Lake Alfred to lead us in the invocation.
'Twas grace that brought us safely thus far, and grace will lead us home. Help us tonight, Lord, to get off to a good start to our school year tonight. Let everything that is said and done be for your honor and glory. Bless our school board, bless our administrators, bless our teachers, bless our staff, but most of all, bless our parents and our students. And we pray on August the 11th, when the students arrive to school, that they will arrive safely, and they will find teachers and coaches, mentors, and friends that will honor the image of God inside of each of them. Help our students this year to communicate, collaborate, to think critically, and create in such a way that people may know that something special and something great can come out of a place called Polk County. I'm a proud graduate of Catholic Saint John High School, and so I carry 863 in my heart, and I pray that the students will also. Lord, you got us through last year, and we know you're gonna get us through this year too. If you did it before, you're gonna do it again. So we thank you for a successful school year. Once again, bless our students as they go back to school. Allow them to find friends that love them, and they can love someone back in return. We thank you for all you do. And finally, Lord, as I conclude this prayer, thank you for my mama, Lord, Sister Kate Fields. I'm so grateful to be her son tonight. We thank you in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Harris. And I'd now like to call Owen James Trask Rodriguez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, except for you, Owen. All right, so I hear you are a student at Spessard Holland? Is that correct? What grade will you be in?
Um, fourth.
Fourth? Are you excited to go back to school?
Yes.
Yes? So what has been the best thing you've done this summer? I know, that's a trick question, because I'm sure they didn't prep you for that one.
Probably playing cards with my dad.
Very fun. What's your favorite card game?
Um, Go Fish.
I like it. So what other things do you like to do for fun? I hear that you might play guitar. Is that true?
Yeah.
Yes? And I also hear that you're pretty funny.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So do you have any witty jokes or puns for us?
Um, okay, so... What did the pickle say with the pickle with the problem?
I don't know.
What's the dill pickle?
That is a good one. Man, I think we need a joke at the start of every school board meeting from now on. Um, I know it made my night a lot better. So Owen, do you know what you want to be when you grow up?
Hmm, not yet.
Not yet? That's all right. Listen, you've got plenty of time to figure that out. So thank you so much for coming and leading us tonight. Do you have any special guests here with you?
Um, I have my mom, my sister, and my dad, who she worked here.
Awesome, very cool. Well, thank you guys so much for bringing Owen out to hang out with us tonight and to lead us in the pledge. Owen, have a great school year in fourth grade, and we hope we get to see you again soon.
Okay.
You can sit down now. All right, so we will now call this meeting to order for July 25th, 2023. The first order of business will be acceptance of the school board agenda. Superintendent Hyde, do we have any revisions?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. At this time, item A3, acceptance of the school board agenda, had an updated motion attached. Item D2, approval of the minutes, June 13th, 2023, work session meeting minutes were removed. Item D3, approval of minutes for June 27th, work session meeting minutes, work session meetings were removed, work session minutes were removed. Item F number one, new administrators, the attachments were updated. Item Q2, 2023, 2024 tentative budget and mileage rates, attachments were added. That concludes the changes to the agenda. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda for the July 25th, 2023 school board meeting as revised?
Second.
Have Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, I'm gonna turn it over to you for special recognitions.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of community and staff. At this time, I'd like to ask school board member Lisa Miller to step down to represent the board for today's special recognitions. And board members, you will not be surprised at who we're recognizing first. At this time, I'd like to bring down Dan Talbot, Senior Director of Athletics, to come forward. Mr. Talbot was recently named a finalist for the Leadership Playbook 2022-2023 Administrator of the Year Award. I'll read a brief statement from the letter that we were provided. This award recognizes individuals in leadership positions who strive to develop other leaders, make people and situations better, and provide a positive example for those they influence. TheLeadershipPlaybook.com helps athletic departments and support teams build stronger cultures by developing better teammates and more positive leaders. As part of the online curriculum, the program has hundreds of two-minute video lessons to increase a person's leadership abilities, develop these life skills. We want to congratulate once again, and thank you for investing in the lives of your staff and your students. Signed, Jamie Belcher, author and leadership consultant. We want to continue to provide recommendations and acknowledgements for Mr. Talbot. Additionally, we received a press release from Akron, Ohio. Dan Talbot recognized for his leadership. Dan Talbot from Polk County Public Schools has been announced as one of the nominees for the Leadership Playbook 2022-2023 Administrator of the Year. The award seeks to honor individuals in leadership positions who strive to develop leadership in others, make people and situations better, and provide a positive example for those they influence. Board members, after earlier today, you received, or we heard during the workshop, a year review for athletics, and it's a quite impressive list of accomplishments. And as many of you noted, Mr. Talbot hates being the focus of attention, and quite honestly, told a story earlier today as to why he doesn't want to be the focus and why he tries to make our students the focus. And I think that conversation earlier today provides further testimony to this amazing man and what he accomplishes each and every day in our school district. So if you'd please join me in recognizing Mr. Talbot.
Woo!
Uh, thank you, Superintendent Hyde and the school board. Appreciate the honor. Again, like I said in the work session, I accept this award and all the accomplishment on behalf of the school district, the 17 schools within our district, and the athletic directors at each school. We're working as one unit to provide the best opportunity for our student athletes. We don't always get there, but it's striving to be perfection. So again, I thank you humbly for the award. There is another side to me in my half. I do want to thank my wife for being here. I don't tell her enough how much I care about her, and our lives are going in different directions because she works just as much as I do, but anytime I do get a big head, she's there to, um, to make sure that I get back in line and do right by kids. I'm fortunate that I married a former student athlete of Polk County Public Schools who reminds me every day of how important the kids are in her county. So I am fortunate to have someone that supports me at home, and also, if I get out of line, can put me back in line. So I do thank her for all her support and dedication to our profession, because like all these administrators and the ones that will be recognized here later, you do have to have a strong support at home, because we give a lot of our time to our student athletes. But that is our passion, that is what we chose to do, and hope we do it well. But again, I thank you for all the support, and I look forward to another great year, and I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for, like I said earlier, our finance department, our payroll department, HR, IT. It's one collective group moving forward, so I appreciate all the schools, principals, athletic directors, and again, humbly accept the award on behalf of everyone in the district. So thank you.
I gotta remember the tippy toes. At this time, I'd like to bring down Jeanette Crowley, Director for Strategic Planning and Partnerships, who will recognize our Focus on Excellence program partners.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent Hyde. It's an honor to be here with each of you tonight, as well as our community members and those online with us. And we're gonna begin with our Focus on Excellence highlight video.
The third year of our Focus on Excellence employee recognition campaign proved to be bigger than ever. The Focus on Excellence campaign strives to honor staff members from different employee groups who might get overlooked amidst the hustle of keeping one of the nation's 30th-largest school districts running efficiently. Nonetheless, these employees are providing exceptional public service and make the motto "Students First" their mission. Thanks to our generous sponsors, we were able to expand the total number of this past year's winners to 40 employees. Each was nominated by their peers for this honor and were ultimately selected by an anonymous judging process. The selected honorees received prizes from our business partners and were invited to special appreciation luncheons. In addition, they were recognized during school board meetings and featured on the district's social media and website. We appreciate everyone who nominated a PCPS employee last year, and we encourage nominations to continue in the coming school year. Polk County Public Schools employs more than 13,000 staff members. There are still so many public servants who deserve to be the focus of this special recognition. Thank you for supporting Focus on Excellence.
Um, I think that video captures our program beautifully. I'm proud of the impact that this meaningful program is having on our employees. Before I introduce our program sponsors, I'd like to say thank you to all the PCPS employees who submit nominations. Thank you to the Public Relations and Strategic Partnerships team, who works together to make this campaign successful for PCPS, and to the countless other employees, and then as well as departments that help support and make this program successful. We truly do have some amazing business partners within our community who come alongside us each and every day. Because of their commitment to our community, Polk County Public Schools and the Focus on Excellence program were able to expand the number of employees and recognize our 40 employees throughout the year through appreciation luncheons. We also were able to host our luncheons at the Club at Eagle Brook, who's also a partner of ours. I'm thrilled to report that all of the program sponsors have renewed their partnership efforts through the 2023 through 24 school year, and we've even added more additional sponsors. At this time, when I call your business name, please come forward to be recognized. Chick-fil-A, South and North locations, we have Chase Weber with us. And I'd like to give each partner, because they invest so much within this program at Polk County Public Schools, an opportunity to say a few words. If you'd like to.
Um, I personally, and I know on behalf of Chick-fil-A here locally in Polk County, there's a few of us, but one thing we get to do is hire the young people of Polk County. We start at 14 years old, and so we love partnering with the schools and the school board to really make sure we can impact young people's lives. And so we just thank you, all the teachers and administrators, for the work that you guys do, day in and day out.
IDX, formerly Image Depot, Ryan Delevanyary.
Well, um, you know, it's very easy to get behind a program like this, because it points a spotlight on all the great things that our educators are doing. And, you know, I know that it can be a thankless job at times, and I think as a dad, especially take into this, because I'm going, we got a lot of kids that were putting through this system, and we're really relying on these teachers to show up every day, and they do. Love to see that we're bringing attention to them, and I'm really happy to be a small part of it.
Thank you. Mid-Florida Credit Union, Jennifer Deveraux.
Um, on behalf of Mid-Florida Credit Union, we thank you. We have a long history with partnering with the school board, and this is just a great program to recognize individuals, and it truly is the gift that keeps on giving, from the peer nominations to the individuals who are recognized for coming into work with a purpose, not just, you know, it's a job, right? And so that impact has a positive effect on the culture, the faculty, the students, and the community. So we look forward to the new school year.
Thank you.
Public Supermarkets Inc., Jeff Brumba.
So just on behalf of Publics, I'd like to say thank you. It's really ingrained in Publics associates, from the 14-year-old bagger all the way up to someone like myself as a store manager here in Bartow, that giving back to the community is what we do. George Jenkins was once asked how much he thought he would be worth if he hadn't given away so much of his wealth, and his answer was probably nothing, you know? And so giving back is in us, and then plus, I'm married to a wife that's been teaching in Polk County for 25 years with the school board, and so she would, she understands, and I see firsthand the untold hours that are behind the scenes, not just in the classroom. I mean, she was at school today doing stuff, getting ready for the new year. So I thank you guys and everything you do, and all of the 13,000-plus members that are in the school board, and teachers, and all the support staff, and everybody involved. You guys are the heroes. So thank you.
Thank you.
CPS Investment Advisors, Eric Jackson.
Yeah, on behalf of CPS Investment Advisors, our firm, this is something that we get behind. It's a no-brainer. We give back quite a bit, and being able to support the staff, the teachers, you know, the machine that goes behind educating these kids, it's a pleasure, honestly. And so, and getting to see a little bit about what goes on behind the scenes, I mean, that was really enlightening. So, yeah, it's the least we can do, and we look forward to many more years of this support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hand and Stone Massage and Facial Spa, we have Stephanie Di Martino with us.
On behalf of Hand and Stone, thank you so much for having us, and we're very honored to support such a great program that highlights their outstanding employees. So I look forward to seeing the winners and hearing their stories this year.
The Club at Eagle Brook, Deborah Winter.
On behalf of the Club at Eagle Brook, I'd just like to say we're honored to be able to participate in this program, and really look forward to being able to continue our sponsorship for next year, and are looking forward to amazing luncheons, and we will see you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. The next item on our agenda is public comments on agenda items to be voted upon, as adopted at the start of this meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome the public and go over our public comment process and the opportunities for this evening. We will have three opportunities for public comment. The first will be for items on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. The second will be during the public hearing for public hearing topics. And at the end of the meeting, we will have an additional opportunity for public comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. To register to speak, community members must fill out a card, a speaker's card, in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts and comments. However, this is not a question-and-answer session. If you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office outside of board meetings, and we would be happy to have deeper conversations. First, we will have Emmett Purvis, and on deck is Royal Brown.
Good evening. Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Hyde. I'm here to discuss several items on the agenda tonight. The first item is on page 18 of the agenda under subject K2, instructional administrative action. Please advise me if I'm wrong, but appears this item should be the sole responsibility of the members of the school board. I would not like to see any actions taken where there is no one held accountable for making personnel policy or changes without the express permission of the elected representatives, and in any case, involving HR should not be a consent item. Sometimes it may look to be more efficient to do so, but again, not without the public being aware of the reason. Please enlighten me and those present while this is done, because the board's responsible for hiring, evaluating, terminating all of school board employees, including the district superintendent. The second item, I would like to point out, that we are spending millions, if not billions, nationally on digital training, teaching programs. My questions are, what are the teachers doing with all this information overload? Is it teaching further indoctrinating our students, and are the digital learning programs approved by and sanctioned by the Florida State Board of Education? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Purvis. Next up is Royal Brown, and on deck is Glenda White.
Good afternoon. I'm Royal Brown III. I live in Winter Haven. Reference agenda item O, Teaching and Learning Consent Agreement, items 13, 14, 15, 18, and 19, all involving funds for purchasing various teaching and learning programs totaling $2,623,000. I don't know where these funds come from, but obviously, they're funded by American taxpayers. I phoned and/or emailed the contact persons listed on each of these items, and following are the results. Items 13 and 14, Jeff Hancock was not available, so I left a message to call me, but he did not call me back. No email address was provided on the agenda for Mr. Hancock. For items 15 and 19, I called Joe McNauton and was told he was at a conference all week, so I emailed him but received no response. I then contacted other contacts listed. Item 15, Victoria McKenzie, who did respond to my email but didn't completely answer my questions. For items 18 and 19, I received an email response from Carrie Foster, who did not completely answer all questions that I asked. I have two points here. One, if you're gonna list contacts on agenda items for public inquiry, the contact should be available or at least respond to messages from the public. My second point is that none of the references or contacts for these consent agenda spending provide information about measures of effectiveness, expected outcomes, and/or performance standards for these large expensive programs. Since my retirement from Polk County School Board system in 2009, I've seen very little progress in achievement levels by Polk County Public Students, or School System, for students assessed by the Florida Department of Education. Please take a look at the handout, their Florida DOE charts, showing that Polk County Public School ranks below state average test results for Level 3 and above in every subject category. The taxpayers of Polk County and the parents of students in Polk County Public Schools expect improvement in student test scores, that is, bang for the buck for these expensive supplemental education and teaching and learning programs. Quite frankly, we're tired of Polk County Public Schools being in the bottom quarter of all Florida school districts in student test scores. We're gonna hold you responsible to make significant improvements and will monitor future results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Glenda White, and on deck is Bobby Dees.
Hi, my name is Glenda White of Winter Haven. Regarding consent agenda K, subject 4, chart 3, I'm concerned about Mr. Hyde taking oversight of equity and diversity from human resources. Does this mean Mr. Hyde will oversee hiring, provide reports to the State Board of Education? Who knows? It's not on the information offered. I'm concerned that a person who's unaccountable to the public is the wise choice for this role. I suggest the board receive oversight as they are accountable to the voters. I'm asking that all information provided by Mr. Hyde be viewed and approved by the board before being released, and that information be presented to the public. Affirmative action was declared unconstitutional last week by SCOTUS. Affirmative action often results in people being hired just to fill a color block rather than for their qualifications. This practice should be stopped lest we further destroy our Polk County schools. Regarding consent agenda O, subjects 4, 5, 6, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, purchases of educational or supplemental education materials adding up to millions of dollars, and the millions spent during the 22, 23 school year, we're seeing these massive amounts voted on and spent with little or no discussion. Little or no information on the agenda, and we never see the results of these purchases. In fact, Mr. Royal Brown has supplied each of you with statistics. In fact, Mr. Royal Brown has supplied each of you with statistics on how our kids are performing, and it's not good. I'd like to know if these materials are effective. Why do we continue spending millions on them? There should be statistical numbers and percentages information on how these materials are used, who's using them, how many use them, and the statistics on performance. If they're not effective, we should stop purchasing them. Our kids are not social experiment labirants. They're not for sale to the highest political bidder. They are human beings in need of an education. Please give them one. Regarding Consent Agenda Q, Subject 2, I'm asking to please take this item off the consent agenda until you are able to discuss the total figure proposed before voting. And be transparent. You can't build trust with the community that actually cares about our kids' education if you continually fail to put appropriate and enough information on these agenda items. I have to wonder if this is an effort to keep people in the dark. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next up is Bobby Dees.
Hello, my name is Bobby Dees. I'm from Winter Haven, Florida. I'm here regarding Consent Agenda K, Subject 4, and Agendas M, Subjects 4, 10, 12, and 13. I signed up today to speak on multiple subjects, but I cannot speak on information I don't have. Only one contact person reached out to me, and that was today, but they had to get answers to my questions from another source. I've had this problem before and/or that I didn't get a call back at all. Please try to appoint someone else that can answer questions the same as the appointed contact person is able to do. Due to a lack of transparency in these subjects, I could not complete my investigation. I had many unanswered questions. For example, Agenda K, Subject 4, District Reorganization. Why does Mr. Hyde want to oversee the Equity and Diversity Department? Why do we even have this department? And is Mr. Hyde going to be involved in hiring? If so, will he be hiring according to Equity and Diversity or Affirmative Action? Agenda M, Subject 4, Mental Health Applications for $6.25 million. Why so much money? Where is a complete breakdown of expenditures? What results do you expect, and what service providers are you employing? Agenda M, Subjects 10 and 12, Healthcare Associates for a combined total of nearly $3 million. Again, need a complete breakdown of expenditures. Why are you hiring 28 behavior support specialists? And why are you targeting eight classrooms in four elementary schools? And why are we supporting what seems to be a mental health facility in schools? And what M, Subject 13, Polk County Department of Health Student Services, suggests to me to be a doctor's office in school? All these are paid for with tax dollars. The public demands transparency. A lack of transparency can only lead one to guess about what information is given. Like, are you hiding something? Transparency builds trust. Without trust, you can't have a solid relationship. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. That concludes the public comment portion for items on the agenda. Our next order of business will be approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes from June 13th School Board meeting, and I will seek a motion to approve the minutes from the June 13th, 2023 School Board meeting.
Move to approve.
Ms. Miller and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be approval of the consent agenda. And I'll now seek a motion for approval of the July 25th, 2023 Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Ms. Miller.
I just wanted to make a comment I had made in work session concerning the consent agenda items with Envo and these other support services contracts. In the past, I've heard from staff that we have issues with these people taking on contracts. They cannot fill, they do not have the personnel, so they'll take on the contract and recruit. So I've talked to the superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent of Support Services to make sure that when we agree, these contracts will be monitored so we know that the staff is coming in. And they're not only coming in, but they're capable, and they're willing to go into all schools. I've had phone calls that staff from these contracted companies do not want to go into our center schools, and I don't know that we should give them an option because all of our schools need services, especially the students with high significant needs. So I talked about it in the work session, and I encourage you all, if you haven't, to watch the work sessions. It gives you a lot of information. But it is confirmed that these will be monitored, and these contracts can be canceled if they are not fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dr. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to draw attention to consent agenda within Letter O, Teaching and Learning. Each year, we approve various articulation agreements with local colleges for students to participate in dual enrollment. So I just want to draw attention to these agreements that we're approving tonight within the consent. For parents and students to know that dual enrollment options are available to you, and that would be Kaiser, Southeastern University. Warner will be an action item coming up, as well as South Florida State College. And just, you know, the flexibility that's afforded to our students when they take dual enrollment, if they plan to attend college, is accessible to them at free of charge as well. And on top of that, the financial savings that are a part of this and these articulation agreements that we take part in. So happy to support those. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Ms. Fields.
Yes, I want to have comments about the district reorganization. We had a very end-up discussion today about the reorganization and some of the concerns concerning the ESE positions. And Mr. Hyde has stated that we will be getting quarterly reports to see how the Medicaid funds and everything balances to ensure that we are on track. And I feel good about that. There was also some discussion about whether or not we need to place the Equity and Diversity position under Superintendent Hyde or someone else. And when that position was established back maybe in 2004 or maybe, I don't remember when it actually was established, but it's been a minute. That position was under the supervision of the Superintendent of Schools. And I'm not really sure when it left the Superintendent of Schools and went to HR. I think it might have been when Superintendent Byrd was the superintendent. I'm not sure. But I believe that that position needs to be under the umbrella of the Superintendent of Schools. We hold him accountable, and that's a part of his devaluation. And I am very confident that he will be able to do what is necessary to ensure that the Equity and the Diversity piece is adhered to. And one of the comments that I made in the work session today is that no one wants a handout. One wants an opportunity. And I don't believe that the Superintendent of Schools would put someone in a position that's not qualified for that position. And if he or she, whoever that superintendent would be, would do that, then it's up to the school board members to do their job and to do the evaluation and do whatever is necessary. But as far as this day, and as far as this position, I believe that it serves well being under the supervision of Superintendent Hyde. So I will be voting in support of that.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Sharpless?
Got a few questions I asked during work session Superintendent Hyde that I'd like to just reiterate now to the public. First, on Consent Agenda Item M4, our Mental Health Application. Does the Sanford-Harmony Program conflict with the February 2023 memo from Commissioner Diaz pertaining to social-emotional learning?
It does not. We cannot teach social-emotional learning in its traditional sense. However, the department, even in the application, it's explicit in a request on behalf of the district, "How are we supporting the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students?" And so we have been conferring with the department as recently or as today to receive confirmation that our application, and again, if the department takes issue with our application, they will return it to us for correction. But as of this afternoon, we were told that we were well within the scope of what we were to do. We do not teach SEL in its traditional sense, so what people have come to consider traditional SEL components. We are, as Commissioner Diaz's email or letter to superintendent stated, it was, the concerns were explicitly limited to edgenuity. And the commissioner went on in his email correspondence to state that it's up to school districts to ensure they're compliant with state statute. And so again, we will continue to confer with the department to ensure that we're in compliance with those expectations.
Thank you. Another one on O18, the purchase of the Houghton-Mifflin Harcourt Math 180. Like I said, when I looked at that Soul Source Master List, one of the programs is Common Core Code X. And so we quit doing Common Core standards back in 2019. So does this curriculum prepare students for an assessment that we're not currently doing?
No, sir. This is the comprehensive list of all of their products. The only product that we are procuring is Math 180. So again, they are a Soul Source provider, have been identified as such. However, again, that attachment simply lists all of their products. The only product we are looking to adopt and support is Math 180.
And that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Mr. Nolte?
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless, for asking a couple of my questions. I'd like to make a comment since some of the public tonight, and also I've heard during the last week, has had trouble contacting people here in the school board. And of course, we're on vacation, I understand that. Maybe possibly next time, we can put at least another extra name and number to contact since it is frustrating to call down here and not able to talk to someone. But again, I understand it's vacation and everything, but I think we need to add at least one more name to those things. Thank you.
Good point. If I may, Mr. Nolte, I've made a note of that myself. It is interesting that Mr. Hancock's email has been provided in other items within that same category. So we'll make sure, unfortunately for us, 17 or 19 of our school district staff, including teachers and administrators, were tapped to be part of standard setting. So they are there for the entirety of the week to work with the state of Florida, as well as colleagues from across the state on invitation from the Florida Department of Education. However, there should be a process in place that when they're out of office, there is someone else to provide a response within a timely manner. So we will work to address that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Superintendent Hyde?
Yes, ma'am. Just a matter of clarification. I think it's important to note, as Ms. Fields pointed out, the position of the DEI had reported to the superintendent through the year of 2013. That's when there was a change. This is not an HR function. This is, HR and hiring equity was just a small part of what this job entails. This is also our compliance arm. There are several reports that required to provide to both the state of Florida and the federal government as it relates to student participation, both in academic areas and their performance in academic areas. And that's important for us to know that this person is our compliance arm. Additionally, this is the person who's responsible for other concerns, including ADA complaints. And I provided the example of this boardroom where the ramps were not previously ADA compliant. So when we had to work at Jim Miles for the entirety of a school year, that was so we could retrofit this facility to ensure that we would be compliant with those expectations. That's a function of this job as well. This job and this individual also works directly with procurement to ensure that we're abiding by board policies and expectations, state policies and expectations as it relates to fairness, veterans preference, those types of things. And as the board has shared previously, there's a great deal of concern that many of our local companies have felt excluded from the bidding process because they felt like they don't get a fair opportunity. So I want to make it very clear, this is not about race. And to Mrs. Fields's point, none of us in this community, none of us in this room would benefit by hiring unskilled, untalented labor simply based off their gender or their race. And that's simply just a false statement or a false narrative. We work as hard as we can. Now, we do work to ensure that we have a diverse workforce. And that is important for us because we want our employees to reflect the students in which they serve. However, our first priority is to ensure that they're competent and highly skilled. And so I wanted to provide that reassurance. The reporting to me, it's important for everybody to understand that with the exception of Mr. Bridges and our auditor, every position in the school district ultimately reports to superintendent's office. And so I'm not here to unduly influence this individual, but there have been concerns expressed that in their current capacity, they have felt that they couldn't make progress in certain areas. And so it's important for that, again, to default to myself or the chief of staff. Mr. Dr. Allen, excuse me, made a very good point earlier today that when this was first under the superintendent, there was not a chief of staff. And so there are districts where it does vary as to who it reports to. I simply went back historically to where it reports to and to try and streamline it. But I can assure the board and the community that Mr. Pitts, the chief of staff who oversees operations, which includes procurement, finance, HR, will be directly involved as well to provide that reassurance to the board. And to the question that was posed earlier, the board gets copies of all of our submitted reports, and they are attached to the board documents every time we submit a report to the state of Florida or to the federal government. And so that point of transparency is there. That information is readily available. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, do we have any new administrators?
Madam Chair, we have quite a few. Those who are unfortunately not able to be in attendance tonight, but I believe that they deserve their recognition. Jennifer Crowley Brown, Administrative Assistant at Lake Alfred Elementary School, has been promoted to Assistant Principal at Lake Alfred Elementary. Caprilla Jennings, Testing Coordinator from Roosevelt Academy, has been promoted to Assistant Principal at Winter Haven High School. And Caitlin Gregory, Senior Coordinator for High School Regional, has been promoted to Assistant Principal at Rochelle School of the Arts. For those that are, should be in attendance tonight, I'd like to begin with Carmen Bonilla, Administrative Assistant at George Jenkins High School, who has been promoted to Assistant Principal at George Jenkins High School, who was recently challenged with her very first opportunity to demonstrate her competency because we held our principals' meeting there last week, and she had to ensure that everything was clean, tidy, and prepared and ready for our attendance. So welcome this evening. Congratulations.
I would like to thank Superintendent Hyde, Madam Chair, and the board members. I would also like to thank my mom and my son for being here. They have been my biggest supporters. I would also like to thank my friends, Ms. Lahara and Ms. Jimenez, for being here. They're also educators and future leaders. Finally, I would like to thank those amazing leaders I've had the privilege to work with and are probably one of the reasons I'm here. Leaders aren't born, they're made. And they're made just like anything else through hard work and education. I couldn't help to think about eight years ago when I was recruited in Puerto Rico by former Superintendent Jacqueline Byrd. I was placed at a top school. I faced many challenges, many challenges personally and professionally. The struggle was real. But at the same time, I gained a lot of knowledge, experience, determination, and a lot of leadership roles and opportunities. Last but not least, I would like to thank my former principal, Mr. Roberts, former AP, Mr. Dwayne Johnson, and my principal, Mr. Tom Patton. Thank you for your support and for your guidance. Most importantly, thank you for not just telling me, but showing me what it takes to be a transformational leader. Thank you.
I was going to say, please have your family join you. Fantastic. Mr. Carlos Rodriguez, previously an interventionist at Alta Vista Elementary School, has now been promoted to Acting Assistant Principal at Juanita Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. Hyde and Madam Chairman and the board. First, first and foremost, I'd like to say that I'm just very grateful to be an Assistant Principal, excited for the opportunity to, to grow as a professional at Juanita Elementary. As far as giving thanks, I would like to thank Mr. Green and Ms. Knave and Mr. Roberts, who actually approved me. I haven't actually met them yet, but they actually approved my position, so really grateful for that. Also very thankful to Ms. Caballero, I think she's here today. She kind of interviewed me and hired me on the spot, so I'm really grateful, and I'm excited to be part of the Juanita team. And I would be remiss tonight if I didn't thank my former principal, Ms. Celeste Stewart, for just trusting me and all those leadership activities that you gave me and, and all of those wonderful things, especially the STEAM Academy that we did at Alta Vista. So, thank you for that. And I would also like to thank my beautiful wife that's here and my family for all your, all your support over the years. And I've been teaching for eighteen years. They're like, get into leadership, get into leadership. So, here I am. So, and last but not least, I'd like to thank my elementary school principal, Claire McGraw. She's retired, but she actually still keeps tabs on me. And she's the only principal that actually paddled me. Actually, I think I got the message. So, thank you. Thank you.
Would your lovely family please join you? And I assure you, you will get to see and get to know those individuals very, very, very well. Congratulations again. Ms. Cassandra Peters, Director for Exceptional Student Education, promoted to Senior Director for Exceptional Student Education.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, Superintendent Hyde, families and community. I'm humbled and blessed by the opportunity to continue to serve and grow as a leader here in Polk County. I would first like to thank God for this important task that has been given to me. I would like to thank first, after God, my husband and best friend, Daryl Peters, and my beautiful children, Max and Emma Hall. My son just started Summerlin today. He did his first day in boot camp. He loved it. I said, you're gonna go back for more? He said, absolutely, Mom. So, what I'd like to say is, being a wife and mom has been the highest privilege and reward that I've had been bestowed upon me, along with being able to serve here in this community that I reside in. I take this job very seriously, and I'm dedicated to the families and making sure that I put my all into it, as well as working beside the passionate group of people that I call friends and family. I do, I do, again, appreciate the opportunity. And honestly, I feel that the purpose here for me is to continue to serve, to humbly serve and grow alongside our families and staff, and continue this glorious journey alongside of all of you. Thank you.
I was gonna say, please have your, please have your family join you. Thank you. That's awesome. Pleasure. Thank you very much. Is it Jodan? Dr. Christina Jodan, previously an instructor with Penn State University, is newly appointed as the Assistant Principal at Elbert Elementary.
I'd first like to thank the board for welcoming me back to Polk County at Elbert Elementary. I would also like to thank Ms. Knave, Mr. Campes and Ms. Wise for the exciting opportunity to serve the community and the families at Elbert. And lastly, I'd like to thank my children for always supporting mommy in her role that has her heart. And as well as Ms. Stewart for her mentorship during my leadership roles within the county.
Are you joined by any family to this evening?
I am not. They are all joining virtually from Pennsylvania.
Fantastic.
They can see you.
I can hear them cheering from there. Next is Mr. Christopher Balance. Is it Balance or Balance? Balance, fantastic. I want to make sure I get it right. Administrator, previously the Administrative Assistant at Frostproof Middle Senior High School, has now been promoted to Assistant Principal at Barto High School.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to say thank you to the board, Mr. Hyde, Ms. Collins and Mr. Lawson, for the opportunity and the faith in me to be the Assistant Principal at Barto High School. I want to say thank you to Kyle Windham and the administration of Frostproof Middle Senior High School for mentoring me for these past five years. Also, I want to extend my, my gratitude to Dan Talbot for his leadership and mentorship. He was one of the reasons why he was, he was noticed today. And then last but certainly not least, I want to thank my family, my wife and kids for all their patience and support as I went through this whole process. I look forward to working hard for the students and staff at Polk County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Dr. Deidra Jo Sullivan, Senior Manager for Exceptional Student Education, who's now being promoted to Assistant Director for Exceptional Student Education.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hyde, and the board members and community. I stand here today as a product of Polk County Schools. I would also like to thank my parents and the village who instilled in me the importance of education, family morals and integrity. Most importantly, I was taught to trust God. I stand here today coming into a new position, new to the district, the position, and I am tasked with doing my very best, serving all students in all schools here in Polk County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Holbrook, BE Teacher from SDOC Celebration K-8 School, who is the newly appointed Assistant Principal at Griffin Elementary.
Hi there. I want to say thank you to the board, thank you to Superintendent Hyde, thank you to Principal Stinson. I'm so excited and thankful for this opportunity. I'm so excited to work with you and to make great things happen at Griffin Elementary. I'd also like to say thank you to all of my administrators and teachers that have, that I've worked with, that have grown me into the leader that I've become today. I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues and my friends, especially my bestie Odie, for standing by my side. I'd like to say thank you to my children, Kenneth, Tyler, Mackenzie and Abby for just never giving up on me, my grandson Luca, all of them for just filling my heart with support and unconditional love. It's just overfilling me. And lastly, to my husband, my best friend Ken, for standing by me, supporting me through good interviews, bad interviews, convincing me to never give up. I'm so glad to finally have reached this spot in my life, and I hope to do you proud. Thank you so much.
Hang on, we're waiting on family. Madam Chair, next is Jessica Miller, School Based Coach from Polk City Elementary School, who's been recently promoted to Assistant Principal at Polk City Elementary.
Good evening. I'm grateful to the board and Superintendent Hyde for this opportunity. I wouldn't be where I am without the love and support of my friends and family. I'm especially grateful to my husband, Chris. He's been my biggest supporter and encourager. I appreciate the rest of my family, including our teenager, Jayden, my sister, my mom, my in-laws, and for also supporting me through this journey. I'm thankful to the many teachers and leaders over the years and district staff that have molded and shaped me into the educator and leader I am today. And finally, I want to thank Ms. Hancock for trusting me enough to hire me as her reading coach many years ago. And I'm thankful that she's now entrusted me with this role as her AP, Polk City Elementary, holds a special place in my heart, and I'm going to do my best to ensure that I'm the leader that the students and staff there deserve.
Congratulations. Ms. Smith, would you please pronounce your first name for me? Jo Helene, okay. I just want to make sure. Ms. Jo Helene Smith was the math coach at Kathleen High School, has now been promoted to Assistant Principal at Ridge Community High School.
Yes, I am truly humbled for this opportunity, opportunity. I'd like to thank the board and the Superintendent Hyde for this opportunity. Thank you to my family for your support throughout this process. Thank you to my mentors, Mrs. Legretta Aikens and the late Mr. Johnny Jackson for your guidance and just believing in me. To the administration, students and staff at Kathleen High School, thank you as well. And lastly, to my mother, Lucille Hawkins, to my late father, Johnny Hawkins Senior, and to my uncle, Albert Hawkins Junior, for studying the tone for our family and motivating me to live out my dreams. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have Mr. Joshua Sumner, Administrative Assistant at Caldwell Elementary School, being promoted to Assistant Principal at Lincoln Avenue Academy.
Thank you, board members. Mr. Hyde, it's a real pleasure. I would like to thank you guys for this opportunity. Ms. Antoinette Kirby and the staff at Lincoln, who has been very welcoming, as it's a twelve-month position, so I've already started now. So, I've been there. They're all, have been fantastic, and I'm really enjoying my experience. And I was thinking back to thinking about being in school, now I'm forty-two. I was in school for thirteen years, and now I've been teaching for thirteen years. So, I've been a part of Polk County Public Schools for more of my life than I've not been a part of Polk County Public Schools. That's gonna change in the near future, but we're not gonna talk about that right now. But I was thinking about that, you know, being a part of this. And, you know, we've seen a lot of board members and superintendents come through, and I really appreciate you guys. I enjoy the direction it's going. John Hill with Aspiring Leaders was a great guy, and I think that it took me a little while to fully commit to going into this program and to leadership, but I think I picked the right time with you guys here as a, a great team, Mr. Hyde, and all the district folk. You guys are fantastic. All the people who have mentored me, Ms. Sharp, I worked for her for five years. So, I thank all of you guys. Thank all the people who come out to the school board meetings and care enough to actually show up and not just hanging out at their house complaining about stuff. But you guys are out here too. So, thank you guys for coming out, and I'm just really excited to be a part of it all.
Congratulations. Next, we have Ms. Kimberly Best, Testing Coordinator from Davenport School of the Arts, being promoted to Assistant Principal at Davenport School of the Arts.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members and Superintendent Hyde. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal at Davenport School of the Arts. Being born and raised here in Polk County, I am a product of Polk County Public Schools, and I've been an educator in Polk County for twenty-four years. So, I'm excited and blessed at this opportunity to give back to the community, which is my home. I want to thank my principal, Cindy Brayton, and for allowing me to work alongside her and Assistant Principal Alicia Hughes to make DSA shine bright. I want to thank my family, my husband, Justin, my daughter, Kaylee, my son, Tyler, who's away at college, and my mom and dad, Brenda and Brian Stokes, who are here this evening. And thank all of my family and friends who aren't here but have supported me during this journey and for the future. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Chauncey Mitchell, Assistant Principal, being converted from an eleven-month Assistant Principal at Lake Region High School to Assistant Principal twelve months over our DJJ programs. Okay? Mr. Corey Klebo? Klebo. Administrative Assistant at Davenport High School, being promoted to Assistant Principal at Davenport High School.
Yes, sir. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. I'm gonna tell a little story. When I started this administrative journey across the street at Barto High School, I met a brand-new Assistant Principal to the district. I learned a whole lot from him, a whole lot of how to do things his way. And it's been an awesome four years because this year he became the principal of Barto High School, and I have the opportunity to now start my administrative journey as an Assistant Principal. So, I gotta thank Lance Lawson for, for a lot of what he taught me. I gotta thank Doug Harwell as well. He's over at Davenport High School with me, Mr. Dujie, for the opportunity. I look forward to not only making Davenport be great, but being a representative of Polk County as a whole and making sure we continue to improve and do the things that you guys are doing so well. So, thank you guys. Oh, hold on. I gotta thank my beautiful wife back here, Alexa. She's one of the best curriculum minds we have. Watch out for her. Thank you.
Ms. Klebo, we expect to see you here soon. LaChaz Cofield Harris, Assistant Principal at Mia Escuela Montessori Charter, is newly appointed as the Assistant Principal at Chain of Lakes Elementary.
Thank you to the board, Superintendent Hyde, his leadership cabinet, and to my principal, Ms. Suzie Nelson. First, I'd like to give an honor to God for an amazing opportunity to lead and serve. I am because he is. To my son, you are my heart, and every day I live as an example, that you are braver than you know, smarter than you understand. And remember in this life, it is not how you start that matters, but how you finish. Thank you to my family, my friends and my school leadership mentors. You all have been my greatest advocates, my fiercest critics and consistent cheerleaders for my success, and in some cases, saving my career. Last, to the Chain of Lakes staff and scholars, know that I love each of you beyond measure, and I believe in your potential each and every day. Remember these words from a foster kid straight out of the housing projects in Brooklyn, New York. Finish strong. Go Otters. Thank you.
Wait, we need to take your picture. Congratulations. Mr. Ronald Roundtree, Administrative Assistant from Spook Hill Elementary, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Lake Region High School.
Good evening. First and foremost, giving honor to God for the opportunity, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hyde, Deputy Superintendent Green, school board. I would like to extend my sincere thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I would like to thank my beautiful fiancee, Bridget Robey, who is here and supporting me tonight. Thank you for sticking by my side and being with me as we made the transition from Mississippi to Florida. You are my rock, my right hand. Thank you for trusting in the plan of moving to this state where we have no personal family, but we gain so much more. She is also a product of the Polk County School Board. I would like to thank my principals, Dr. Myra Richardson and Ms. Michelle Browning for their leadership, guidance, and support along the way. Ms. Browning, who is in attendance this evening, boss lady, oh, there she is. Of the 23 years in this business, I've benefited the most from working under your leadership. Your calm demeanor under pressure, knowledge of discipline, as well as curriculum, embody success with change in academics, culture, and climate in any school that you lead. One day, as principal, I will model my leadership after your style. I would like to thank my fellow coworkers, Natasha Atkinson and Ms. Kristy Chandler, who are here to support today. Ms. Atkinson had to leave, but thank Ms. Chandler for being here. Thank you for working alongside of me as we strive to build positive relationships and transfer those methods to our students. I really appreciate that. I would like to give a special thanks to my recruiter, mentor, and close friend, Assistant Principal Edward Commons, who is in attendance this evening. Thank you for recruiting me to this state, being an ongoing mentor and a very close friend. Thank you for pushing me to get back into leadership. You saw the potential in me and not allow me to settle for less than who I am. You saw how I can benefit the district from a leadership standpoint. Because of you, I'm able to stand here today. Sir, not only did you recruit me, you unknowingly recruited my fiancee to Polk County School District as well. On behalf of my family, I say thank you. I would also like to give a special thanks to my dear friend and mentor, Assistant Principal Melissa Bearden, who is also in attendance this evening. Working alongside of you, this past year, we changed the narrative, we changed the culture, we erased the stigma, we built a family environment at Spook Hill that will last for many years to come. I wouldn't be able to stand here today in confidence of my new position if it wasn't for you. Thank you for your leadership, guidance, and your ability to mold me into the leader I am today. Ma'am, we faced and conquered many challenges. Through it all, you stood by my side and taught me how to lead the right way, the Polk County way. For that, I'm forever grateful. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank my current principal, Ms. Amy Hardy, for allowing me to serve alongside of her, for whom I will serve faithfully and with honor as we strive to make Lake Region's High School the best high school in the state. Go Thunder!
I know your fiancee is going to come join you, please. He has officially requested all of you. Shannon Herter, Behavior Interventionist from Horizons Elementary, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Bellicita Middle School. K8.
I don't know how to follow that. That was a lot. I want to thank my friends and family who are watching because they couldn't be here. They were very supportive. I want to thank Mr. McDougall, he's out here, for giving me the opportunity. I look forward to serving our community and him. I want to thank Mr. Blankenship, Ms. Melton, and Ms. Baderos for never telling me no, because if it weren't for them, I would not be here. Thank you to my aspiring leaders, colleagues, as well as Mr. Hill. He was amazing in helping me and developing me to get here. And thank you, Lord. I'm here, and I'm happy to be here. Bye.
Congratulations. All right, Ms. West. Ms. Tamika West, Administrative Assistant from Mulberry Middle School, is being promoted to Assistant Principal at Mulberry Middle School.
Thank you to the Board, Superintendent Hyde. I just want to first thank the Lord for just blessing me in this calling that he's given in my life. I remember just getting the call, and I was like, "You sure about this, Lord?" And I wouldn't take it for granted. I don't take it for granted. I thank him for being able to serve our students, being able to serve my fellow staff, members, and friends and colleagues in this, in education. And so, I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful to my family, my tribe, my parents, who always supported me, who encouraged me, who pushed me to dream and continue to push to move forward, and just my tribe, who's always been here for me. I'm thankful for my principal, Ms. Candelas, my boss. I'm thankful for, as soon as I came to Mulberry, she was so excited to have me on the campus, and she continued to pour into me. She continued to push me. She continued, "When you going to do leadership? You want to be the dean? Do you want to do this? When you going to do that?" And so, I thank you, Ms. Candelas, for believing in me. I thank you for pushing me, and I thank you for the work that we're going to do at the Mulberry Middle School. And I thank you, and I thank you for just the people that I've worked with over the years, who also have poured into me, who've also encouraged me. I thank you for the students that I've served, and I just thank you. Thank you.
So, you have a big cheering section. Are they going to come down and take a picture?
Are they in the picture?
All right, come on. Next is Mr. Sean Livingston, Assistant Principal from Paget Elementary School, who's being promoted to Acting Principal at Boone Middle School.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, Mr. Hyde and school board, for the opportunity. I'm honored to join and serve the Boone Middle School community. I guess I'm now a wildcat. I thank God for sending me on a path to work with middle school students in a variety of roles. I have been a special education and general education teacher, a professional development trainer, an administrator for average students, as well as a middle school and elementary Assistant Principal. It is a pleasure to lead a school with such amazing students and dedicated staff and a supportive community. I'm grateful that I was blessed with a beautiful family. I want to thank my lovely wife and my three amazing children for their continued support. I very much appreciate the help and support that I receive from many friends, colleagues, and personnel within the district along this path. Again, I look forward to working with the Boone faculty, families, and community, and toward a great school year. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir. And who's joining you this evening? Fantastic. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Luke Witt, Assistant Director for Accounting, is now being transferred to Assistant Director for Internal Audits.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde, Madam Chair, members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here. I look forward to transitioning into this new role. I also have to thank Ms. Matthews for giving me this opportunity as well. I'm excited to learn all that I can under her. She has a wealth of knowledge, as I'm sure you all are aware. So, I'm ready to learn under her and serve you all. My family could not be here tonight. My wife just gave birth to our third child about eight weeks ago. So, she could not be here. They are watching from home, though. I love you guys, and yeah, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to this next opportunity with Polk County Public Schools. So, thank you.
Congratulations on both counts. Madam Chair, that concludes new administrators.
Sorry, we have to get the picture first. It's the most important part. Thank you, Superintendent Hyde, for introducing all of our wonderful new administrators. I think the list gets longer every, every month, but it's exciting, because that means great things are happening at all of our schools. Next on the agenda is going to be our action agenda. So, first will be P1, the Superintendent's Recommendation on the Charter Application for Navigator Academy of Leadership. And the motion, so I'll now seek a motion to deny the charter application for Navigator Academy of Leadership High School.
So moved?
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I just want to say that our staff did an awesome job in reviewing this application, and it took a lot of time and effort on all those folks' behalf. We take charter schools and kids' education, as you know, very seriously, and for the district to recommend denial instead of approval, because our area, Davenport, is one of the fastest-growing in Polk County. So, as you may be aware, I don't know if it's in the backup for the public, but it was denied by our Charter Review Committee 12 to 3. And it's one thing if it's, you know, 6 to 6 or 5 to 6, but there was an overwhelming amount when I went down and reviewed all the different sections. There was quite a few where they simply did not meet standards. And there's nothing more important to me than a child getting a first-class education. And if we can't, if they can't provide that or show that they are able to provide that, then I feel very strongly that we need to uphold the Superintendent's Recommendation, which is why I made the motion tonight. So, that concludes my comments on this school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be item P2, Lena Vista Elementary Naming of the Physical Education Pavilion in Honor of James Murphy.
I move to approve.
Ms. Miller and Ms. Fields, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to read the letter recommending.
Ms. Miller, go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Superintendent Hyde, I am proudly recommending that the legacy of Coach James Murphy be kept at Lena Vista by naming the Physical Education Pavilion in his honor. Coach Murphy has dedicated 35 years of his career to our school community since he first joined Polk County Public Schools in 1988. During his tenure, he devoted himself to the betterment of our students, serving as a mentor, role model, and a friend to so many young people. Coach Murphy has led physical education classes, organized sports teams, and has taught students to have a well-rounded appreciation for wellness. Please take into consideration this request in naming the Lena Vista Elementary Physical Education Pavilion in honor of Coach James Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And do we have someone from Lena Vista or James Murphy? And yes, why don't you come on down if you'd like to say a few words?
I need a new set of golf clubs. I'm humbled, and it's an honor. I never expected anything like that, and it has been my privilege to serve Polk County and its students for 35 years. And thank my wife and Ms. Sharp. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. We'll look forward to the official unveiling of your name on the pavilion. The next item on our agenda is P, sorry, P3, Language and Literacy Academy for Learning Contract Renewal.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Cunningham, any discussion? Ms. Miller?
Just going to say that I appreciate the conversation and work session today. Schools like this, that really cater to the most vulnerable students, sometimes need extra help and support. I am looking forward to those reviews of not only the financials, but of the support services that are provided, to come back that we are meeting the needs of those students, and we're providing the help, any help that's needed, either at the district or at the state level. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next will be P4, the Matter Middle Charter Contract. I'll seek a motion to approve the Matter Middle Charter Contract.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And next will be P5, the Warner University Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreement. This was pulled separately from our other dual enrollment articulation agreements due to Mr. Sharpless's relationship with Warner University. Do you want to?
I was just going to say, I'm a professor at Warner University, so I need to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless, and you have filed the appropriate paperwork, correct?
Yes, I filed the appropriate paperwork. The appropriate paperwork.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. All right, I will now seek a motion to approve the Warner University Dual Enrollment Articulation Agreement, addendum for 2023-2024 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Miller, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, 6 to 0. All right, and next, we will go into a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. The first order of business is any comments on public hearing items. We have not received any comment cards this evening for public hearing items. So, first will be Q1, policy updates. And we will take each of these separately. So, first, I will hear a motion to approve updates on Board Bylaw 142.3 orientation.
So moved?
Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll have, I'll seek a motion to approve updates to Policy 5121. Next we'll have, I'll seek a motion to approve updates to Policy 5121 Controlled Open Enrollment.
Move to approve?
Second.
Ms. Miller and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Our third policy update will be, I'll seek a motion to approve updates to Policy 7520, the Naming of School Facilities Commemorations and Memorials.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Sharpless and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, I'll seek a motion to approve updates to Policy 5111, Homeless Students.
Move that we approve?
Second.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The next item for our public hearing is the 2023-2024 Tentative Budget and Millage Rates, and I will ask that Ms. Jenkins comes up to walk us through this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. State statute outlines the format and language by which we have to approve the tentative budget, so I will begin and walk you through. On Sunday, July 23rd, 2023, the district ran an advertisement of the fiscal year 2324 proposed millage rates in the Lakeland Ledger. In accordance with the truth in millage trim requirements, the board must hold a public hearing within five days to discuss the proposed tax levies and tentative budget. The tentative budget for this year involves three different millage rates. The required local effort, which is 3.160 mils, discretionary operating, .748 mils, local capital improvement, 1.500 mils, totaling 5.408 mils. It is recommended to approve the following millage rates. We recommend that you approve the required local effort millage in the value of 3.160 mils. That requires a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. So I'll now seek a motion to approve the required local effort, including prior period funding adjustment millage of 3.160 mils.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the required local effort of 3.160 mils.
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
We recommend you approve the discretionary operating millage in the amount of 0.748 mils.
The next motion, I will, next I will seek a motion to approve the discretionary operating millage of .748 mils.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
We recommend you approve the local capital improvement, capital outlay millage in the amount of 1.500 mils.
I'll now seek a motion to approve the recommended local capital improvement for capital outlay millage of 1.50 mils.
As part of your packet, the tentative budget summary is attached, and the last three pages of that are the trim ad, which was run in the Lakeland Ledger for your review. Next we will ask that.
Sorry, I think we, I needed the motion on the capital outlay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Next we will ask that you recommend approval of the Resolution Number 2023/24-01, formally adopting the millage rates for fiscal year 2023-2024.
I'll seek a motion, I'll seek a motion to approve Resolution 2023-202401. Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Next we recommend approval of Resolution Number 2023-2402, formally adopting 2023-2024 tentative budget in the amount of 2,500, 2,503,700, but, sorry,
And I'll seek a motion to approve Resolution 2023-202402, formally adopting the 2023-2024 tentative budget in the amount of 2,503,715,811.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Finally, we recommend approval to submit to the Property Appraiser Form DR420S, the Certificate of Taxable Value, which reflects the previously approved tentative millage rates and sets the final budget hearing for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at 5:01 PM at 1915 South Floral Avenue, Bartow, Florida, 33831. And one final point I must mention is the millage rates this year, the total millage rate to be levied is 7.50% more than the rollback rate.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that's to start no earlier than 5:01 PM on September 5th. I'll seek a motion to submit to the Property Appraisers Form DR420S, the Certificate of Taxable Value.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. And we will now close the public hearing and reopen the school board meeting. Superintendent Hyde, do you have a report for us?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, the next work session and board meeting will be held on August 22nd, 2023. The work session will begin at 12:30 PM and the board meeting will begin at 5:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the District Office located at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Bartow.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. And Mr. Bridges, do you have an attorney's report for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to your conversation at the work session this afternoon, request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held during the regular meeting of the school board of Polk County on September 5th, 2023, to consider changes to the school board policy regarding proclamations.
Does that include that, because there were two other policies that we heard today during work session?
I know that the request that I, the request I heard was, was to advertise a public hearing for this one, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to double.
Yes ma'am, that was my understanding.
Thank you. So we'll seek a motion to approve the authority to advertise a policy on proclamations for the September board meeting.
Second.
Ms. Fields and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else for your report?
Ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. And Ms. Matthews, do we have an internal audit report today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening I'm bringing the internal audit plan for your approval that I previously emailed to the board for your review. The internal audit charter requires school board approval of an annual audit plan. The audit plan was created from a comprehensive risk assessment of the school district and covers as many higher-risk areas as possible, given our available resources. Audit plans must be flexible to account for unanticipated demands such as unscheduled audits and investigations. Any significant deviation from the approved audit plan will be communicated to the school board through periodic activity reports.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, and you need a motion on that, is that correct?
I need approval of the annual audit plan.
And I'll now hear a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Internal Audit Services Audit Plan.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I just want to say to Ms. Matthews, you always have done an incredible job and we appreciate the amount of work that you and your team does. And I know you just recently, we just tonight approved or got to meet the new young man in your department who's been promoted and we're excited for that. And I know that it's a thankless job. We know that. But it's something that we appreciate, the time and effort that's spent, because it's looking at where our, you know, tax dollars are being spent and making sure that through our Audit Services Department that our schools and all are being financial, that are financially being audited so that proper things are being done in the schools to ensure that we don't have fraud and we don't have theft and those types of things. So it's great that you present this plan to us every year and you consistently do an outstanding job with your team. And I just want to say on behalf of the kids who aren't here to speak tonight, to say thank you, because it's basically making sure that the dollars that are allocated to our schools are being taken care of and are being properly spent. So thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Matthews, and congratulations on hiring an assistant director. I know that has also been a challenge, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Next we will go to board members' reports. Dr. Allen.
Madam Chair, I have no comments tonight.
Oh, man. All right, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple things. I just wanted to say a huge kudos to Principal Shannon Brown on an absolutely wonderful ribbon-cutting and historical marker dedication and unveiling. It was held at Davenport Elementary School in cooperation with the Davenport Historical Society. Many thanks to the McKnight family for their generous donation in sponsoring the historical marker, creating a legacy for this school that was built and started in 1927. So kudos to everyone at Davenport Elementary School. I also want to give a shout-out and a special thanks to Susan Copeland, Executive Director of the Polk Education Foundation, and her wonderful team. Our company provides scholarships to graduating seniors every year. And to that end, we receive a report annually, how much money that the Polk Education Foundation raises to help students. And I'm very happy to report that this year for the scholarship season, the Polk Education Foundation was able to raise over $893,000 to assist over 400 students in Polk County public schools. And that's a lot of money raised. So I just want to say a special thank you to all of our donors throughout Polk County whose commitment helps our students achieve their post-secondary goals. So thank you, Ms. Copeland, and to the team, and of course, to our donors who consistently provide donations every year to make this a realization for our graduating seniors. And that concludes my report. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Indeed, Ms. Cunningham, thank you so much. Next, Mr. Nolte.
Thank you. I can't believe Jamie Murphy is a gentleman I built golf clubs for. I just figured it out about 32 years ago and he had jet-black hair. And that's why I kept looking at him. Man, he looks familiar, but he's a great, was a great young man then. Now he's a great older man and I'm glad he got the Physical Education Building named after him. That's really classy. And thank you, people, for attending tonight's meeting. Thank you for your support. Buckle down the hatch, I think it's August 3rd, the kids are back. So keep reading to those el, no, what day are they back?
11th.
That's right, 11th. So keep reading to your elementary young'uns and looking forward to a great year. Hope we can get as much support as we can and keep on spreading the word that Polk County is moving forward and upward. So thanks again. Have a great summer and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Ms. Fields?
I just have a couple of items. It's been a long day. I am very proud that my son was here tonight to do the prayer. He also swore me in when I was re-elected to the school board in November of last year. And he is a teacher at Lakeland Christian. He teaches Bible. So he has really done well and just very proud of him. And I think he is willing to come anytime he needs to pray. So that's a good thing, that he wants to come and do it. Also, I want to congratulate all of the folks that were recognized tonight for your promotion, for your new positions, and Superintendent Hyde, it definitely is a reflection of our school district and our students. And so that's a good thing. So thank you to you and your team. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Mr. Sharpless?
I've got a few things. First, I want to congratulate Emma Self, who is Bartow High School, class of 2023, just recently graduated. This last month, she was elected as a vice president for the Florida FFA Association. And so she'll be representing, she's one of seven statewide that will be representing Florida FFA. And she's right here from Bartow High School. So want a huge congratulations to her. Bringing it back to District 6, I want to congratulate Mr. Ray Cruz, who is the agriculture teacher at Roosevelt Academy. He was named the overall Florida winner of the National Ag in the Classroom Excellence in Teaching about Agriculture Award. Wow, that's a mouthful. But nationally recognized for the top one in Florida, so that's pretty impressive. For you 80's rock band supporters and, I guess, hairband junkies, want to say that Frostproof High School's choir got to open for Foreigner this past month. So that was pretty cool over in Tampa. So our, you know, our choir there at Frostproof, want to give a big shout-out to our fine arts there. Couple more things. I just saw yesterday on our social media in our district that we welcomed our newest guardians, our school guardians. I just want to take a second to thank all of our guardians and our school resource officers, because without them, it would be very difficult to keep our school staff as well as our students safe. So thank you. I think we got another SRO right here, right? Yep, and are you, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you both also for keeping us safe tonight, but also our students. So just want to put up two of my, two of my programs I'm going to start this year that I'm trying to get more out into the community in our school district. First, agricultural literacy is something I'm pretty passionate about. Having our students realize that milk doesn't come from publics, it actually comes from a cow. And I'm going to focus on our elementary schools and going out and actually reading a book. And principals be prepared to get an email here within next week. But I want to go read a book, an agricultural book, to our elementary schools and get in there and educate about agriculture. We have some great educators in our, in our school district. But I, I want to get out there and I want to see our students and I want to, I want to teach about agriculture to them. So I'll be doing an agricultural literacy program. As well as, one of, one of my favorite things is high school football. We're about to start that season, and so I plan on going to a different game every week, a different, a different school. So really get out there in the community. So principals, if you, if you want me to attend your schools, make sure to email me and I would love to, both reading as well as football. So thank you both, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller?
I have a couple of exciting things that came out of Lake Gibson High School over the summer. Gabby Tedesco is one of the students there who won the Fargo, she's the first female wrestler at Lake Gibson to win a national title. She won in the 100-pound division Fargo National Wrestling Tournament. She won the state in 2023. She went, she went and ranked 29th and went all the way up and took the title by the end of it. So we are very proud of Gabby and her coaches and the team that helped support her. Also, we have a teacher at Lake Gibson, and if you've never been out, I know we're way north, so pack a snack and get some gas. But if you want to come way out north, Lake Gibson High School has a beautiful theater, and they have an amazing theater teacher. And I want to recognize Greg Burdick. I've seen some of the shows that he's produced with the students, but he also wrote a play called Accommodation. So if you live in my world, you know what that means. It highlights a teacher, a parent, a student administrator, the whole meeting, the concerns about the child's education and their accommodations. The play was produced and performed in Los Angeles, and Mr. Burdick went out to, to completely be celebrated for his artistic work. And so I'm very excited for Mr. Burdick. We're very lucky to have him here. I want to hope that he's not snatched up. But he went out to LA in July and received those nominations for that play, and I'm so very proud of him, and I can't wait to see his plays this year with the students. I have a couple of more things. Today, we had a staff member introduce us to the ways of leadership, and it also applies to advocacy, so I wanted to share it tonight. There's not many people here, but I wanted to share a little bit about positive advocacy. You know, I don't know everything, but I did teach a couple of courses at the state level through the last governor's office on disability advocacy. But when advocating for an issue or a cause, you know, we talk about staying calm and collecting data, assuming positive intent, and leading with integrity. Also, making collaborative relationships. And I think we have a lot of groups here. If you weren't really inspired by tonight, I don't think you were breathing, because you can see how many people love this school district and are here. For families, multiple people and their families are employed with us, they're products of our school district, and when we have issues, they step in to help resolve them. The opposite of that is chaos. And if you don't know and haven't watched the news, there's a lot of chaos in school boards. I can tell you Polk has kept it out for a lot of the reasons that you saw tonight. Dedicated people who care about kids, a school board and a superintendent who creates processes and policy to make sure that we are meeting the state and national standards. I want to read a couple of things that we receive. One specially targeted to our superintendent. I will not name the people that send them, I will name the groups that they come from. Our Winter Haven 912 group sends emails calling our superintendent bigoted, politically bigoted, and then he hires politically biased liberals with no, to ensure that politicalized liberals are hired for these positions, no matter their skin color. We received some very vile emails about our superintendent and about our board chair. This email went on to, to target the board chair, and I want to make a public statement. I'm very proud to be on this board. I'm very proud of the chair. I think she's done a phenomenal job for her term here, and I'm very proud of this superintendent. We don't always agree, he can tell you. I come with my list, but when I do, I do it in a respectful manner. I also get forwarded the emails from the CCDF, CDF, I'm not sure, they keep changing the name. And I want to believe that this group has good intentions. I've kind of told them in the past, the house can't always be on fire. You've got to be doing something, we've got to be doing something that you think is positive for students. But again, the all call to come out tonight to read books that are currently being challenged, look around the room. The all call didn't bring many people out, because people realize that is chaos, and our students deserve better. We have a system for the books, we have a system for the books to follow, and I think people are following it. We've got a great list, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to follow policies and procedures. Polk County doesn't tolerate chaos. And for the group that brought in a convicted felon to run campaigns and cause chaos in this county, I want to believe that you want to do something good. I want to believe that you care about the students in this district. So I'm asking that when you look to advocate, that you advocate in a positive manner, you bring facts and you bring compassion to our students. Our students deserve that, because in all these emails, and all these, which is not all these emails, two emails that I received, students are never mentioned. Nobody talks about the kids. They attack our superintendent. So I want to say tonight publicly that I'm very proud of our superintendent, I'm proud of this board, I'm proud of being a school board member in a time that I'd never imagined would be. And so I just want to thank our staff for showing up all summer long. I've went out and met new principals at schools and teachers who are volunteering. And the last thing I want to say is very positive. Karen, she's going to be so embarrassed I mentioned her. Karen Hyam Brown is a teacher at Philip O'Brien Elementary. She was in behavior, which pays a lot more money, but she went into the classroom because she cares about kids. And over the summer, she realized that students with disabilities, especially significant disabilities, don't get opportunities to go to summer camps. There's just not. The city doesn't have enough support for them, they try to do their best, the YMCA's, it's hard to find support. Those kids go home and sit for the entire summer. So what did Karen do in her spare time? She created a three-week camp at her house. She took volunteers that were other teachers. She took older students that would come in and volunteer. And she gave these families respite, and she gave these kids a place to learn. They learned about money, and they learned, they went to the store, and they had outings. It was a phenomenal, a phenomenal program that a teacher didn't have to do. And those who our teachers are. Our teachers are good people, our staff care about kids. So I want to appreciate the people who still maintain that message and understand what we're doing here, and the people that lead and advocate with calm and positiveness. And I'm hoping the people that lead and advocate in chaos will join on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I am going to abstain from having any comments tonight, because I know we are running late. Other than just welcome back to our students and staff, I'm, I know that the cars are already in the parking lots, even though we don't start technically for a couple more weeks, but it's exciting to see all of the magic that happens on the first day of school. If you are looking for the best entertainment you can buy, go and have lunch with a kindergartner on the first day of school, because them trying to carry those trays, classic. But welcome back to all of our students and staff. We'll now go on to the public comment portion of the agenda for non-agenda items. Just as before, all speakers will be given three minutes. The clock will give you a warning sound when you have one minute left, and, I'm sorry, it will flash yellow when you have one minute left, and it will give you a beep when it is complete. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in accordance with school board policy. First will be Douglas J., and on deck is Jesse James. If you could state your name for the record when you come up as well.
I think we can tell from a few of the comments actually made earlier by some speakers that white supremacy, the evil myth of white supremacy is a problem in this country. Look at what our governor is doing with education. I sent you guys a list of resources, one being from the National Sexual Violence Resource Center, article labeled, "What are the connections between transphobia, racism, and sexual violence?" I want to make sure that we are educated on the issues facing the LGBTQ+ community, especially since we seem to be removing any mention of them in the schools. The proclamation last month was removed, not, no reference to it this month, as was requested. There were actually a couple of comments on that, so the first one being that there's lots of things we don't mention every month, so let me quickly do that. July is Disability Pride Month, National Minority Health Awareness Month, French American Heritage Month, the National Bison Month, and Plastic Free July. August, you can pick up any of these next month if you'd like to. National Black Business Month, National Immunization Awareness Month, Don't Be a Bully Month, Spinal Muscular Astrophe Awareness Month, National Road Victim Month, and World Cancer Support Month. I only have two more months. September, Blood Cancer Awareness, National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery, Library Card Sign-Up Month, which should be every month, National Suicide Prevention Awareness, and World Alzheimer's Disease Month. And finally, for October, we have ADHD Awareness Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Depression Awareness Month, LGBTQ History Month, and National Book Month. Now, I would like to make another comment. The other reason it was removed was stated that we wanted to represent all members of the community, which actually is more telling than the excuse, than the person meant it to be, saying that you do not view the queer community as your community. Now, why would I say that? Well, you literally refuse to speak of us. This is a problem, especially with all of the hate, the spike in anti-trans legislation, which most of the country doesn't even want. We need to be there for our students. I remember, I grew up in the public school system here, I, Barto High School, I remember, 2007 graduating, let me tell you. Pretty homophobic, dealt with a lot of, sorry, dealt with a lot of terrible bigotry. And that's an interesting thing, bigotry. So many people are more worried about being called a racist or being called a bigot than actually doing racist and bigoted things. We have too many people out here who would rather look down on others than look out for them.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Jesse James, and on deck is Elizabeth Suits.
Hello, I'm Jesse James, and I'm going into eighth grade, and I'm 13 years old. And I just wanted to cover the proclamation issue that was addressed during the work session this afternoon. I agree with Mr. Nolte, Mr. Sharpless, and Mrs. Cunningham, that I don't, I don't think it's okay, because I think that the school board should focus on more important things. And the most important thing that the school board should be doing is focusing on children's education. I'd say that you should let the municipalities handle things like that with all the proclamations. And with the Pride Proclamation specifically, you, you celebrate a heinous sin against God, which, whether you believe in Christ or not, is, it's wrong either way. And in House Bill 1069, it states that you cannot sexualize children in schools. So with the Pride Proclamation, tech, you're breaking, you're breaking God's law and man's law. Even so, if we only celebrate our differences, we forget that we are united as Americans. And there is a simple truth that not a lot of people understand. It's that united we stand, divided we fall. And so if we can, if you, if we only focus on how we're different, then we won't recognize how we're similar, and then we'll, we'll be ended. That's it.
Thank you. Next up will be Elizabeth Suits, and on deck is Pam Luce.
I actually want to address a couple of comments that were made in the work session discussion in reference to the policy and procedures for proclamations. Mrs. Miller said, "A lot of people we're listening to have no interest in the outcome because they don't have children in our schools." And she also mentioned something about very few middle school groups that she talked about a minute ago who make decisions for the many. I just want to take a minute and tell you about who those groups are. We are a group comprised of parents, grandparents, current and former educators, taxpaying Polk County residents, who absolutely have a vested interest in the student, in these students. We want Polk County students getting the best education possible, which we have a lot of work to do as we land somewhere, I think, near the bottom of the academic barrel. And we want our students to receive the full protections afforded by the laws in the, in Florida statute. I personally was born and raised in Lakeland, a graduate of Lakeland Highlands Middle School, and an honors grad with distinction at Lakeland High School, and I'll be a dreadnought till I die. I am a former, I'm a former public school kindergarten teacher, and I have kids that I'm raising here in Polk County. I have an interest. A school board member is elected by the community for the community he or she serves. And so, community members, including groups that exist within, within those communities, have a stake in this. We have literally invested in these school systems with our time, our talents, and our taxes. Regardless of whether we have a student currently in the system or not, we by nature of our constitution have a seat at this table. So I believe it is disrespectful for an elected official to minimize and continually detract from a group's input into school board issues, just because they have opinions with which, with which board members may not agree. I respectfully ask that members would not use their platform to negate or minimize the voice of community members or groups, but instead would use their voice to engage in the long-lost art of civil, civil discourse, where an individual can walk away maybe not agreeing with the other person, but maybe seeing the bigger picture of where that person is coming from, and maybe why they are showing up. Our motivation for being here tonight is we care. We care how students are performing, we care if our tax dollars are being spent wisely, and we care about the future impact on our community, of which these students are also members. So instead of being annoyed that local groups and individuals are here invoking their First Amendment rights, be thankful we still have the right to do so, and be thankful our students can see the petitioning of our government in action, because that's how all of this is supposed to work. I personally would love to see divisive proclamations off the agenda and get back to the pub to task at hand, our education of our students. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Suits. Ms. Luce, and on deck is Patricia Harvard.
Okay, on the agenda today, there were several millions of dollars of new curriculum, and we watch this curriculum being adopted year after year. But we really don't ever get to see that, what the data shows that that, if that curriculum is effective. What we can see on the FDOE website, though, are the results of, test results, and I apologize, I should say test results, not grades, on your, your handout. And I want you to take special notice of the red line across the middle. These are the Polk scores for the last seven years. That red line is the 50% mark. And on the second page, you'll see the state results, and on the last page are the graduation rates. I was really impressed tonight with all the new administrators that got up, and, and what did they say, but they thanked God for their position. Oh my goodness, they thanked God in the public school system. And you know, what we teach in the public school system is that they were created by a big, the children are created by a big explosion at some point in time that happened out of nowhere. But what we ought to be teaching the children is that they are not an accident, that they are known and loved by their Creator before they were born, that they are precious in His sight, that there is forgiveness, and that they are the recipients of His grace and His mercy, because they have received grace and mercy to love others regardless of the color of their skin or beliefs. If God can forgive them, then they should forgive others. And if we could get back to teaching that in our schools, you'd see these test scores very, very differently.
Thank you, Ms. Luce. Patricia Harvard, and on deck is Jessica R.
I asked for a formal investigation as written in Board Policy 5517 at the June meeting due to my child being harassed and bullied when attended Blake Academy. I never received a call from Doc, from Mr. Hyde or Dr. Allen about this. I finally received a call from Sherri Scott. I asked what the next steps were in the formal investigation. She said the investigation was done, and there was nothing left to do. The policy states that the compliance officer is to take a written statement from me, and that they are to get a list of potential witnesses. This was not done. No interviews as required with me, the other parents, or any witnesses were held. No written report has been provided as required. In the meantime, Polk County, Polk County judge has twice determined the video that was made of my child, twice determined that the video that was upheld in, I'm sorry, twice determined that the video is most definitely a threat that was upheld in injunction against the child that made the video. I continued to be contacted by the child who made the video. She told others she was going to beat my ass, and my daughter has continued to be harassed by other Blake students. This is the latest voicemail that was left on my daughter's phone, 7/12/23 at 10:30 PM. This is the latest voicemail that was left on my daughter's phone, 7/12/23 at 10:30 PM.
No one in this district seems to care. It continues to be covered up. I will keep fighting this issue until it is addressed, not only for my child, but for the other children who find themselves in this situation. Of all school districts that should care, it should be this one where Rebecca Anne Swendrick jumped to her death after being bullied and harassed. This should be taken seriously always.
Thank you. Superintendent Hyde, do we have someone available?
Careful and take additional information.
Thank you, Ms. Neff. Next is Jessica R. and on deck is Robert Goodman.
Hello, I just want to start by thanking the board for their time and for dedicating your careers to the education of children. I am here as an activist, a taxpayer, a previous substitute teacher for three years, and an aunt to three kids in the Polk County school system. I am also the founder of the feminist activist group, the Lakeland Women's Collective. The Lakeland Women's Collective stands behind Black, Brown, and Indigenous children in the state of Florida who will wrongly be taught that slavery resulted in the personal benefits of Black people. It is your duty to protect all children of all races in Polk and put students first. I noticed that Polk County School Board has not made a formal statement about this yet, and I find that confusing. It implies that you don't see the whitewashing of American history as an issue. Slavery was inhumane. And in order to avoid repeating the past, we must discuss it accurately because Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And Robert Goodman?
Good evening. I would like to address comments at first made by Mrs. Miller at today's work session. As a parent, I volunteered 50 hours a month in public school. As a grandparent of several students in the Polk County school system, taxpayer and representative of countless parents, grandparents, and taxpayers, I can assure you that every person in this room, every person in Polk County, has a vested interest in the education of every student in Polk County public schools. Earlier today at the work session, there was a lengthy and heated discussion about the future of proclamations and if they should even be made at all by the board. If a formal policy on proclamations and resolutions is adopted, implementation of the policy should accord with Florida Statute 100132 Subsection 1, stating all actions of district school officials shall be consistent and in harmony with state laws and with the rules and minimum standards of the state board. The enforcement authority lies at the school board level as established in Florida Statute 100132 Subsection 2, which states district boards shall operate, control, and supervise all free public schools in their respective districts and may exercise in any power except as previously prohibited by the state constitution or state law. It is worth noting that Florida Statute 100142 Subsection 8C3 prohibits classroom instruction by school personnel or third parties on sexual orientation or gender identity in pre-kindergarten through 8. And if such instruction is provided in 9 through 12, the instruction must be age-appropriate or developmentally appropriate for students in accordance with state standards. Beyond this, State Statute 1000.071 is also relevant to this point on the use of personal pronouns and titles. Therefore, your consideration as a board must reflect an observation of Florida law around prohibitions regarding instruction or general identity, sexual orientation, or pronoun uses. That's not gay, straight. That is no sexualization of any child in school. Any proclamation in contradiction with these is unlawful and illegal. It is also important to acknowledge that school board actions that are not consistent or in harmony with state law have also been found unlawful. In the 2000 case WER versus School Board of Polk County, the court found that while the school board has significant authority in matters not addressed specifically by the legislator, it is prohibited from promulgating rules at variance with legislation. That means any policy on the issuance of proclamations and resolutions, such as the one you are considering, must be in harmony with state law. Anything short of this would undermine the Florida legislator constituting acts outside of the legal scope.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Seeing no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.